Welcome to the April 18th Town Council Workshop. We'll start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
Not on the agenda, but because this is the first meeting we've had since the tragedy of last Thursday, I think we'd be remiss if we did not say a word, or several words. For those that are unaware, although I believe most are, while executing a routine warrant, five local officers, or several local officers, came under fire, five of them being shot. Dover Detective Gregory Turner, UNH Officer Eric Kulberg, Rochester Detective Jeremiah Murphy, and New Market's own Scott Cookish, as well as Greenland's Chief Michael Maloney, who was fatally wounded in the incident. Such senseless violence serves as a reminder that even though we live in a small town, those who put on the uniform and our service stand in harm's way day in and day out. And we all owe them a debt of gratitude for what they do to keep us, our friends and our families, safe. So please, next time you pass, police officer, tell them what a great job they're doing for us in our community. I think it's also important that we note that a former New Market Detective Sergeant Tarla Rent was, is now the Greenland Chief of Police, sworn in the evening of the tragedy. And we know, based on her record here, that she is going to serve and lead honorably and well in Greenland, in that department, in this time of unspeakable tragedy. So, given all that, I think that it's only fitting that we have a moment of silence for the officers and their friends and family. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will start with a public hearing on amending ordinance 2011-2012-01, licensure of sidewalk cafe. Do I need to read the ordinance part of the...
No, you can. Title will do what's sufficient.
Do I have it wrong? That's the right one. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:03. Does anyone from the public have a comment on amending ordinance 2011-2012-01? Then I'll rush up at once. All right, seeing no one, we will close public hearing on the ordinance at 7:04.
Need a vote to adopt.
A vote to adopt?
Yeah.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the amended ordinance 2011-2012-01. I'm going to explain what that was. Is that, is there a copy in the bag?
I believe so. Yes, there is, yeah.
I mean, I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 2001-2012-01, licensure of sidewalk cafes.
Is there a second? Discussion. Counsel Lebrun.
That was to make the motion.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Counsel Levy.
Could Ed maybe explain specifically the differences as to what exists now versus what we're doing?
Yes. The amendments to this ordinance provide for the businesses to have their cafe tables out year-round. However, they must bring them in every single evening. And there is, they still need to provide for a license application of $50 on a yearly basis the first of April. Those are the two main changes that were done to the ordinance itself.
So the year versus what before? It was just until...
Before, it was from April 1st to November 1st. And the members of the business association came in and asked if it could be longer because this year we had a sort of very early spring, and they were sort of, didn't have the cafe tables out because it was prior to April 1st. So that was the request that was made and put it in for us.
So it's basically January, February, March, the whole...
Yep.
So in the wintertime, just for sake of asking the question, are they gonna, you know, if they're plowing the streets and whatnot, someone's gonna oversee that?
They have, the business owners have to remove the tables and put them inside. Within the ordinance itself, there is a $100 fine if there is, if they should leave the tables out and they interfere with the plowing of the sidewalks, they can receive a fine of $100 for that. And it would also have an impact on the renewal of their license if that was a, you know, a continuous thing.
Okay. I just ask.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Administrator, the vote.
Counsel Wright.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Lebrun.
Aye.
Counsel Zink.
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael.
Aye.
Counsel Bentley.
Aye.
Chairman Azaro. Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, Town Council to consider acceptance of minutes of the April 4th business meeting. Counsel Lebrun.
Make a motion to accept the April 4th business meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? Seeing no discussion. Counsel Lebrun, or I'm sorry, Town Administrator, the vote.
Counsel Wright.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Lebrun.
Aye.
Counsel Zink.
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael.
Aye.
Counsel Bentley.
Aye.
Chairman Azaro.
Aye.
The minutes are approved, seven to zero. First item on the agenda, Jim Hayes, Superintendent to discuss and release, to release open space funds for school land purchase. Superintendent Hayes, welcome.
As, as you know, last month voters supported the article to purchase several properties on Main Street, commonly referred to as the Carpenter Properties. And, and the, the article said that part of the funds for purchasing that would come out of the open space bond funds. You are, the Town Council agents, I believe, of that fund. And so even though that warrant passed, I believe you still, I believe you still need to take formal action yourselves to release that money. And so I'm here tonight to just initiate that process, whatever that process is, and maybe the Town Administrator can clarify that for you. We have set a date with the property owners of July 12th to pass papers. So whatever process has to take place in that timeframe so that the money's free and clear and able to change hands on that date, then I would appreciate moving that forward.
Counsel Bentley.
Dr. Hayes, the night the original motion here, wouldn't have, I believe, it wouldn't have gone to ballot had we not voted. And we voted six to one to put it on the ballot. We thought the people should decide, not the council. So one of the questions we'd asked that night was, should next year the vote go down on the school, you know, we're not going to repair, we're not going to rebuild, whatever, think of worst-case scenario, what happens? And I think it was again, I don't think, I know it was again asked at the deliberative session, I don't think we've heard an answer. And I've seen a lot of things email me, when people talk, spoken to me about what happens to that, because now it's taxpayers' money that went into it. There's a property, what, who owns the property? The school?
School district owns the property.
Even though the town's putting 370...
Tributed money to this, you know. We are the buyer. Purchase and sale agreements have already been signed. We, the school district is the buyer.
Counsel Lebrun.
Dr. Hayes, I guess my only question would be, since you're utilizing open space funding for this, and say hypothetically, it does, it doesn't work, something go, you don't use it. It's my understanding that there are limitations on uses of that property if you're using open space monies on it. Is that correct? Is that the way you understand it also?
Certainly, that's how I'd interpret it, you know, but...
So it's not like, I mean, if there was a fear that the school would, the district would sell it to put up apartments or whatever, that would not be an allowable use, correct?
That's hard for me to make that, that judgment. I mean, it really is property belonging to the school district. I would, I would think that it's a terrific property, and if it's, if it's not meant to be part of a school solution, then the other things that were talked about were, you know, fields and just open space. But that'd be a discussion, I think, that comes at another, another time, whether the town or the school district decides to sell it at some distant date. I don't want to say that's not possible.
I guess, and, and I fully support doing this. I don't have a problem, you know, allowing the funds to be transferred. But without knowing what the consequences would be should the school develop option B, C, or whatever options there are, and that property does not get used for fields, which would be an allowable use. But if it were used for something else, I, I guess I want to be clear that, you know, the voters voted for these funds to be utilized for open space, and there are restrictions on the open space. I guess I just want to be clear that regardless of what happens with the school district, that that's how these funds, or at least the portion of the property that's going to be purchased with these funds, is you, is used.
Certainly everybody's intention.
I'm sure it is, but things, things happen 10 years, 15 years down the road, so...
Sure they do. I mean, you know, sometimes you have an asset, you need to sell it.
I don't know if we can get a specific answer on that.
We can have a conversation with, with legal counsel.
That's my only concern.
So that we can have a better understanding as to how it should be taken, addressed.
But please be clear, I do support transferring these...
I know that, I know that.
Counsel Levy.
I don't believe the council put any addendums to that vote. The council voted six to one to transfer the property to the school. School owns it, so I don't, I don't...
We have to release the money now, correct?
Correct, at this point. But also, the open space, the bond was, was said it is for open space or for fields. So therefore, while the council may have voted to provide the school district the use of the $380,000, it's, you know, there's a, there's a caveat there that it's for field or open space, so, you know.
Included in that, isn't it? Included in that too was schools.
Right, right.
School facilities. So we're clearly in bounds using it, and there's never been a discussion or intention to try and create a resource that we can sell later.
Counsel Levy.
Isn't it zoned business now? Wasn't it zoned business before? Carpenter property?
I don't know the zoning.
I think it was.
I think it was, too.
So I think you're going to find that, you know, if the school doesn't get built, for whatever reason, or it doesn't get expanded or whatever, I believe that we, council voted six to one, not we, the council voted six to one to let the voters decide and release it to the school if they voted for it. The voters voted for it. There wasn't, from my understanding, there was no addendum to that. But I, I'll leave it at that, I'm not an attorney, but I don't think you can restrict it.
Counselor Carmichael.
Yeah, my question would be, and I probably don't have, probably don't have the answer on this because you're talking about seeing legal counsel. Would the school committee then be in charge of making the vote on that? Before the land could be sold, the school committee would have to do that, correct? I mean, if it was sold to, for condos or whatever, I mean, which will never happen.
Some other, some other use?
Yes, some other use, the school committee.
I would think so, and I would think it would really be the voters, frankly.
Okay. It's fine.
Counsel Zink.
To try to ensure we're not kicking a problem down the street that's going to be resolved through endless discussion years from now, I think we need to somehow memorialize the opinion so that people were fully aware that whether, whether we could or we could not use those funds that were intended for, I think, we need an opinion on it, and it should be memorialized.
Is that it? Counsel Levy, there you go, but I haven't had an opportunity to speak yet. I, I agree with what Counsel Zink said. I, the open space funds that went to use that, it would be, not that it's at all the intent right now, but I can see a world where the school doesn't pass, and 10 years down the line, that land is still sitting there, and then it gets sold, and then what happened, and for whatever reason, then we have open space money that, and I'm a proponent of open spaces, that's going to end up, bought something that's going to be sold for some sort of conversion into, into condominiums or something like that. And I just think that, I agree with Counsel Zink, we should find some way, since we do have to have a public hearing and then a vote in order to release these funds, that in that public, in that vote, that we, we work the language in to support that, in that direction. Counsel Bentley.
Well, despite the rhetoric, I'm glad Counsel Levy said, there's a lot of rhetoric, that the council, not all of them are here still, but voted six to one for. Check the tape, I said that night that I would like to see what would happen if the school did not pass. And then that night, at the deliberative session, someone from the crowd answered it. We can check the tape again. And the school lawyer answered, you know, I'm not going to even pretend to say what his answer was, but he pretty much said, "We can do whatever we want to do with it." And as many emails, I got nice emails from people thanking us for voting and letting, letting the school go, I've got equally as amount of emails the last month saying that, that, hey, what happens? Is this more real estate, the town? Call it the school, call it the town, and you said you, you'll own it because it's a purchase agreement. We're the banker, for a third of that, we're the banker, in my eyes. So there's a lot of people out there that have called me, stopped me, emailed me, and said, "Should, should it not go, there's yet another parcel that we can't, you know, we can't get taxed anything from." So anyway, I agree that we need to have some clarification on that, because there's a lot of people that are asking that question, and know there was an amendment put on it, but it's been asked twice, and we haven't gotten a, a real answer from anyone that, yes, A happens, B happens, C happens. I think we need that. I think the public needs that.
Again, my, my perspective would be, and I think it reflects what your attorney said, that, that we, that the school district is the buyer. Clearly, they are the buyer, regardless of where the funds come from. And so then it becomes an asset of the school district, no different than other assets. And whatever the laws govern as to how they'd go about dispersing any assets, apply. But I, that's fine. We're in April, and I don't need the money till late June, so we have plenty of time to deal with this, and if, you're going to contact your council, I assume, right? Okay.
So, next steps are to have an open, a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Do we need the language that we're discussing first? I would, I would rather have that language written out prior to the public hearing.
I will, I will touch base with the legal counsel tomorrow.
Okay.
And ask to get an opinion and have it available for the council's meeting on, in May.
Okay.
And we can discuss it, and if, at that point, we can then move forward if council's agreeable with the language for a public hearing later in, in May.
Great. Anything else, counselors? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, residents Moody Point regarding forced sewer main.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name's Jim Fitzpatrick, Nine Osprey Lane, Moody Point. With me this evening are Trish Simons, she's the president of the association, and Bruce Johnson, who's the children of our water systems group. And just to give you a, a very brief status of where we come from, in the late 80s, as Moody Point was being approved, it was recognized, of course, that it's an environmentally sensitive area. As such, and part of the approval process, no septic tanks, or leach fields, or things of that nature were going to be allowed on the property. And as part of the planning and approval process, it was determined that all waste from Moody Point would be forced, through a forced main, to join the New Market sewer system, and it would be processed in town. Since it was installed, that system has worked successfully, without any breaks or failures up to this point. When the Water Systems Committee is, as we've gone through and updated and tried to track down and, and frankly, get as-bills of our, both our water and our sewer system, we realized that we didn't really know where the forced main was, where it ran, there were no, no information in our records. So we traced that down and discovered its location, and it runs along, it crosses under, but it also runs along the side, within the right-of-way of Cushing Road. It's our financial responsibility, but it's running in the town right-of-way. It's an interesting situation, and it's, it's one we, we've lived with. And what we are here tonight are to ask you for two things. One is a formalization of what, in fact, the planning board insisted on. What we can't find, and nor has anyone in the town been able to find, a written agreement saying New Market will continue to accept our wastewater from Moody Point. We think that ought to be, I think the word was memorialized, something we can all agree on. That's the first thing. And the second thing, quite simply, is that we'd also like an agreement with the sewer department of public works whereby they can respond to, they would respond to an emergency, a break, in a timely manner, because they have both the equipment and the expertise and access to the road and all the rest, without a whole lot of coordination that we otherwise would have to go through with a contractor to deal with it, if we could find one at the time. Our intent here is, we don't want y'all to pay for it, we, we would like to do it on a labor and materials basis, but have the expertise and availability and, you know, of the town public works to deal with it. That way, everyone, including the state, would be assured that we had the proper kind of people working on the problem. That's fundamentally the situation at night, in a nutshell. And it could be one common agreement that combines those two aspects, it could be two separate agreements. But we, we recognize our ownership responsibility for that pressurized main, but we want to make sure we're doing the right thing in having a system in place that should something go wrong, it hasn't in the past, but you never know, that we can manage it effectively. Are there any questions?
Questions from the council? Counsel Lebrun.
First question, you had mentioned that there's no actual agreements between the Moody Point Association and the town for accepting. Is that something that's necessary? I mean...
I think it would be best if we did formalize, you never know, you might have a council in the future that wants to cut them off.
Okay, all right.
So therefore, and at the, at the current time, there was, there was also a question by a counselor, they do pay for us accepting their waste, they, they do get bills for it.
Right, but I, I guess, you know, on a smaller scale, I'm just thinking about it in terms of, you know, I'm a customer, but I don't have a signed agreement with the town saying that you're going to accept it.
But you're hooked up to a town sewer. The difference is...
That's right, you got it.
That we actually have a private collection system, fully within Moody Point, goes down to some pumps that pressurize the main and ship it to you. So it's a little different.
Follow up? And the only thing, other thing that you're actually looking for is just an agreement between the association and the town that should there be a break, that the town would go out, do the services, and bill the association back for it?
Exactly. We'd, we'd appreciate it, since in a way we are ratepayers, we'd appreciate if that kind of agreement could be on a labor and materials, time and materials basis. Shouldn't really be a profit center.
Would it, in terms of, of the scope of work, it would still just basically be on town-owned property, correct? Or, because...
Well, I, I would see that, I think we mean under-town roads, where we have some, like our lift station. If that breaks, that's our problem. All right? Even the pipe leading up to, but at some point, that pipe, there's Cushing Road, when it is out at Moody Point, there's a part of it that's called Lublin's, well, there's a dead end and a turnaround. That's town road. So where it's under the town road, and where we have to get permission to cut your road, you know, that's, that's where we'd like the cooperation. Well, if it goes up over one of our hills, our problem, all right? It'd be really nice if you'd help us, but, but where we run into problems is getting the approvals. If this thing is making a mess in the neighborhood, we want it stopped as quickly as possible to, to, to limit the damage the sewage could do.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Counsel Zink.
So, as the, as this pipe migrates its way through Moody Point, up its hills or whatever it breaks, that your...
The, the lift station, where it becomes a pressurized pipe, where we're really talking about it, makes one push over a pretty good hill, and then there's some grades on Cushing Road. What do you think? What portion of that is on...
Well, as it comes, comes out of the pumping station, it comes across, I don't know if it's a neighborhood we plan, but it comes across the Lublin road, underneath the road, goes up the hill behind Eagle Drive, and comes out down, you know where our dumpsters are? Comes out down at the dumpsters, crosses Cushing Road, and then goes up Cushing Road and out to Bay Road.
And then from, once it gets to Cushing Road, it's basically in town right-of-way the whole way.
So what part of that pipe, if, if, if there's a break as it goes through somebody's yard in Moody Point?
We're, we're responsible for that.
It's our responsibility.
It's all our responsibility.
No, 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 I understand.
What we're really asking, asking for is for you to provide the service for any place that goes under town property.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Totally understand, yes. Thank you.
Any other counselors? I, I just want to say, totally understand, under-town property, makes sense to me. Should be a time and materials, it should not be a profit center, since you're sewer ratepayers, you're paying into this, so it totally, to me, makes sense to have it as a T and M. So my question would be, what are our next steps to draft an agreement?
Yes, and we'll put something together, get it, I'll probably give it to the council first to review it, and then we'll get it to the, to Trish and to Jim, and they can review it, and we can have some further dialogue on it.
Counsel Lebrun.
No offense, but should we be doing it on our dime? The agreement?
We'll just up their rate.
Well, we're not doing that.
It's up to the council how you want to proceed.
I think that's a good point. I would...
I would, I would rather that our council draft the agreement that way, which drafted the way we want it, with them responding to it.
Can I respond to this?
You have a Jim Goen, Counsel Bentley.
When we were talking with, with Ed, and for that matter, Sean, it comes to light that we are not the only pressurized main in town, and that in point of fact, you probably don't have formal agreements with any of them.
It wasn't likely not.
And I would think that, in light of that, it might be in everybody's interest to get this situation, you know, we can use Moody Point as a model, if you like, but it seems to me, do it once, we cover an awful lot of ills. I don't know how many there are, let's, five or six, all right? But it, it makes sense that it handled, it'd be handled that way. I don't think you're going to find that we're going to be arguing real tough about this. You're kind of in the catbird seat about being able to process the waste here. And we already have a rate structure in, in place, and we're apparently in some agreement about time and material, so it's, it's really just good, solid language, is all we're after.
Counsel Bentley.
I agree with Counsel Lebrun. I mean, we did the same thing recently with the surveyors on the water street, and we said, you know, we've been asked to watch every dime, and, and, you know, I don't think it should be much of an agreement, I don't think it should take too much time to draft anything up like that. So maybe their association could draft it, and we just quickly look at it. I can't see where it would be a lot of lawyer time, but just to try to get the process going and...
I think that's a great idea. We can, you know, we can draft it, and as long as we're not being too obstreperous, I suspect it should be no pain.
That's what I like to see.
Counsel Levy.
I'm all set.
You're all set? So...
Just ask the process question, if, so we would draft it and give it to the council or to Ed?
Ed. And he might... Yes.
And he might ask questions of Sean, or Ricky, or us, and, and come back, but I think it could be a pretty quick, should be a pretty quick process to get you folks taken care of. You've come, you know, in good faith, and we've done your homework, and we should do everything to expedite it, so...
All right. Thank you, John Lewis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Fox Hollow discussion. This is to discuss steps to undertake to achieve the improved site distance at the intersection of Fox Hollow. Anything else other than that? I mean, everyone had the opportunity to review the legal documentation that we received first meeting of this council. Questions? Motions? Thank you, Counsel Levy.
What are we doing?
So, that's what the discussion's for. It's what, do you have an opinion of what we should do? I have an opinion.
Well, I mean, I, I think so far, from what I've heard, they, they cut some trees back from the neighbor across the street. Someone said the line of vision was much better. Excuse me, that's sort of where it was left the last time we talked. We haven't really, I didn't see any updated detail as to what...
I, I believe the documentation that the lawyer gave us recommended sending it to the planning board.
Correct.
With the intent of, you, you have it right in front of you.
That they would schedule a public hearing to consider an issuance of an order under RSA 23613, based upon the report of the Van Essen Associates, who served as our engineers. And because that Longco continues to be the owner of record, to provide them notice, as well as to the association, a lot of owners, that they need to make the necessary improvements to move forward on rectifying the situation that we have.
Counsel Lebrun. So if I'm clear, we're going to make... So if I'm clear, we're going to make recommendations via the planning board, and who's going to pay?
Well...
The association? Because didn't the developer, isn't the timeline gone, or the bond wasn't still around, or something like that? So, in the end, is the town going to be responsible for doing whatever the planning board says we should do? Or, did you say they have an association out there? You know, technically, they own, they own that road, correct or not? Okay, so if they own the road, and we somehow plow a portion of it, or, I don't know how that all works, but...
We maintain.
But we still, we don't own it, so I guess what I'm asking is, who's going to pay? The developer's history, from what I heard.
I can't address that question, because I'm not the attorney. I'm going by, based upon what you've seen in the opinion from council, it says that should go to the public, to the planning board for a public hearing. And from there, they will direct Long Cove to take some kind of action. At that point...
Long Cove, I apologize, being...
Long Cove is the developers of the subdivision.
We have currently, if you reread the memo, there currently is no proof that Long Cove is or is not solvent.
Yeah, that's...
So we have no knowledge or...
So let's just say, for sake of argument, they aren't around. Just to, I'm just, I just want to know who's going to pay. That's all I'm asking. Do you have any idea?
I don't.
Okay. Well, that's good. At least we know that. Because I, you know, the only thing I would say is, I think it has been significantly improved. And, you know, I haven't gone out there and driven it and come out, you know, taking a left or right, but from the feedback, I think Councilman Lebranche, or someone stated that it's significantly better, or I think it was Mike, but I can't recall. But in any case, you know, is it acceptable now, or is it...
I think you have a minute.
Counsel Lebranche.
I'll leave it at that.
Well, it, the, the site distance is far better than it was previously. And like I say, I travel that road every day, so I noticed it right off. But I think the key proponent of this is the study that we had done by the...
NS Association.
Yes, that stated that there were some miscalculations done in the original scope of work. And I think that's the issue that the council is at least trying to, that's the issue that I'm trying to address, I guess, because even though the site distance is far better, I'm not comfortable that the actual setup is not the way it's supposed to be up there. So, that's why I would just as soon pursue it, at least on the initial check with the planning board, and get a public hearing on it, and see where they want to go with it, what their thoughts are.
Counsel Bentley.
Yeah, I'm not, someone over here gave the feedback that night, that one of the residents there said it's better, but it's better if you're an SUV, and it's better if you turn right, but not better if you turn left, so it sounds like it's certainly better than it was. But I agree, we asked, just like Counsel Levy said, we asked that night, what are we getting into, you know, if the guy is in Florida, like the other development he has, or association says he is, I don't know why they'd say it if it wasn't true, but anyway, it's, you know, it could be substantial cost, I think we still need to find out. So if he's not there, is the association responsible? We heard that we plow and pave the road, but we don't own it. I think there's still some answers we need to get, along with getting the hearing going. We need to do that, no matter what, but I think we need some behind the scenes work done to see, too.
Minister Urenowski.
Counsel Bentley is correct. There are some folks that at Fox Hollow have indicated that they still do have a problem when they come up to the intersection with Grant Road to make a left-hand turn, or even sometimes to make a right-hand turn. Cars tend to still come up over that hill fairly quickly. Sometimes you might see them coming, and you know to stop. There's also, some people have problems just turning left into Fox Hollow, because, again, vehicles come up quickly in that area. So there is a need to sort of shave that hill, as we talked about when the council was out there doing a site review. I think the process at this point is to let it go through the planning board process, deal with council, and see how some action can be taken to get that rectified, and what it would cost, and then proceed from there.
Let me say something before, and then Counsel Levy has his light on. So, I agree that I don't want to see the town have to pay for this, but I also believe it's our responsibility that if it, the road doesn't meet regulatory standards for line of sight, then it has to be fixed regardless, whether or not it's the developer's fault, and they're insolvent, and they're runaway to Florida, or whatever, but something needs to happen. And I am fine with the planning board being the committee, or the board, working on our behalf to determine, one, is it truly outside of regulations, and, two, if it's at all possible, to have the developer pay for it. So, just because we don't want to pay for it, doesn't mean, doesn't mean it's wrong.
The only thing I would say in closing is, it would be nice if the, if they took a look at possibly doing a bump, or some kind of a speed as an option, you know, a speed bump or something of that nature, just because, as memory serves me, it was in the tens of thousands to shave the road. And I think we should, we should fix it and make it safe, but we should do it with some level of common sense, if we can. That is just my opinion.
Counsel Wright.
A quick question. Does anyone know if DPW has looked at this and given a price, $60,000?
That was the price.
Now, I have a question. If it goes to plan and party, they can decide the responsibility to pay this. Would it be the town, or they could get, going to go after the association? Who would have that ultimate decision? Who ended up paying for this work?
They would do the legwork. We're the only ones who have the ultimate authority.
That's right. Yep.
Counsel Zink.
I feel like we're chasing this issue around the tree. We've had endless discussions about whether we think it's safe or not, and remedies to fix it. And I don't think there's anybody on this board that's capable of making that decision. So, as a result of that, we got some outside counsel, and it was clear that some of the information that was on the original study was incorrect. So we then went to our lawyer and said, how should we proceed, how should we solve this? And he said, take it to the planning board, they're the ones that are holding the restrictions on the permit, get an action of the planning board against the developer. And I think, I think we keep short-circuiting our progress on this, because now we're back to, is it safe again? And I don't think there's anybody that can make that. I think either we follow the advice of our council and move ahead as they suggest, or find another way to move ahead. But to continually discuss whether it's safe or not, I don't think is productive. Thank you.
So, do we need a motion to send this to the planning board?
I would advise that.
I will entertain a motion. Counsel Lebranche.
Make a motion to send the information that the council has received in reference to Fox Hollow, legal and engineering, I believe it was, they were an engineering firm that did it, and ask them to follow the processes as it was laid out in the legal opinion.
Second. Motion to second, discussion. Counsel Levy.
So is the planning board going to make a recommendation as to how this gets fixed, and ultimately, whom it is that pays for it?
They can make recommendations, but they can't expend funds. The only one that could expend funds is the council, correct?
Correct.
So they would do the legwork, come to us with a recommendation, at which point, we would have the discussion involved.
I don't want to sound redundant, but didn't we do the legwork when we had the engineering study? Or was that just to do it and give it to them to reread?
The engineering study's saying it's not safe. Engineering studies say it does not meet code. So, the legwork is...
That was before the trees got cut back, too.
That is correct. So, the next step is, so we could, I'll entertain a motion to pay for another engineering study, now that the trees are down, but I'd probably vote against it. So I think that what this is, is to let them do the legwork around the potential determining if the developer is, would solvent, I suppose, the lack of a better term, whether they are available to pay. An eloquent phrase, but...
Planning board's action. If I may?
Sure.
Under 236, it says that the, the planning board is authorized to issue an order which, quote, "shall describe the hazard, prescribe what corrective action or alteration, and the location or configuration of such access shall be required, and set a reasonable time within which the action shall be completed." And it states, RSA states further, quote, "The owner or the other responsible party shall be civilly liable to the state or municipality for the costs in taking such actions." So, you know...
Sounds like they should have had it from the beginning, really. Somehow it got back to us, and now we're giving it back to them.
Well, it came back to the council, because the residents of Fox Hollow came here. The planning board didn't feel it had, the bond was sufficient to be able to take care of the opinion, or take care of the situation. The council had the road study done to determine whether or not there was a problem there. Came out that it was, and at this point, it's back, the recommendation came from council as to how this council should handle the situation, which is to send it back to the planning board.
Got it. Any more discussion? Mr. Administrator, the votes.
Counsel Wright.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche.
Aye.
Counsel Zink.
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael.
Aye.
Counsel Bentley.
Aye.
Chairman Nazaro.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. I remember four, closeout of New Village, Sean Gregg.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you check, because I'm losing battery power and...
Yeah, I am, too. That's what I've been doing.
Make sure we're plugged in underneath.
Yeah, I'll be back, ladies and gentlemen. Hold on a second.
Is that on?
It's on.
Oh, gee.
Hello, Matt.
Yeah, buddy.
Thank you.
Powering down.
Hey, Sean. What's wrong with you? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm here tonight to go over the New Village project, so that not only you, but the public, as a council, but the public has a clear understanding of what happened at the New Village project. As counselors, that have been on the council a while, when this project took place, it was a very difficult project. We had a lot of complaints on the temporary water, we had complaints on traffic, we had complaints on speeding, dust, we had complaints on the contractor. At that point, in the middle of the project, we actually had the superintendent, the contractor's superintendent, removed from the job, and a new superintendent come in, which made things go a lot faster. But at the end of the day, the final cost of the project ended up being $1,912,440. This includes all construction costs, claims, and credits. The total budget, project budget, was $1,883,189, which put a project overrun of $29,242. Now, the first thing is, at reviewing the project, and looking at it, and discussing it with Brian Hilliard from the Department of, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the amount we paid for the project, we both agree, was a, was a good cost. And when I actually went back and looked at the four other bids, and averaged the four other bids, it came out to $1,970,000, so we ended up being even under the average of the bids. But what truly happened is, like this old house, you open up something, and you find something else. So, I'm going to go down through and describe the project, so everybody has a really good understanding and knows where all the money was spent. First, in 2011, in October, we reached substantial completion. At that point in time, we were still within budget, with discussion with the Stan Tech, the engineering firm. It looked like we were right on the edge of being over, but we were still within budget. However, we still had some outstanding items. For example, one of the outstanding items was rock and, rock removal, boulder removal, and rock and ledge. The reason why that was an outstanding item is because we exceeded 125% of the bid quantity. And when that happened, the contract stipulates that the, that the contractor can renegotiate a new price. So, that was out there. The original price for the removal, what the contractor had done, was, he lowballed it, and he put in a dollar per square yard, which is unheard of. So when he reached over that price, we had to determine what was an acceptable new price. So, we had repeated emails, asking for the contractor to submit his claims. We did not get anything from him. Our first contact on what the claims were wasn't until January 22nd, I believe, of And it was for $189,010. That was what the contractor said. Okay, this is all the unexpected stuff. I want extra money, which nearly knocked me out of my chair. Discussed it, I looked over it with the Stan Tech, they said they wanted to review some of the stuff, go through it, and then we would sit down and discuss it. However, the project was still not over. We still, in May, had to do a bunch of cleanup punch list items, we had to do the final paving and things, so the project didn't actually end until June 1st. Stan Tech Engineering, they said in the past, the way they've done things, is they sit down and negotiate, they sit down with the town administrator, Strater and I, get our feelings on it, go over the strategy, they sit down with DeFleece, the contractor, then, once they get close, then we sit down with them again, and we all sit down and finalize everything out. However, what happened was, is that in October, we were ready to all sit down, and we sat down in this room, the, I think the negotiations took about five minutes, and with DeFleece walking out and saying, you'll hear from our lawyer. At that point in time, I sat down with the town administrator and Brian Hilliard from New Hampshire DES, and we decided that we need to separate these two, and we need to do the negotiations ourselves. So we, in discussion with the Stan Tech Engineering, and with discussion with, with DeFleece Construction, we finally sent a proposal to each company in the beginning of January, which we finally heard back, I want to say, around March 1st. We did not accept the first offer from DeFleece Construction, but they came back, and we accepted the second offer. So, the original DeFleece Construction claims was $189,000, approximately. The final was $68,195. We also had negotiated with Stan Tech because of some of their, we found that they were at fault, that they paid $17,238 towards some paving, which, at the end of the day, left us at a $29,000, $29,242 overage. Now I'd like to just go through some of those overages, some of the highlights, so that people can hear what happened. The first item on the list was six-inch sewer services in the right-of-way. These sewer services, we were replacing the sewer services of the houses, because they were clay lines, they leaked, they had cracks, they had holes. When we dug those services up, what did we run into? We ran into the water lines. The water lines were either six inches under the sewer services, or six inches over the sewer services, or one actually looped around the sewer service. And when you find this, you have to correct it. The state rule is you need a 10-foot separation between water and sewer services. So we had to reroute the water and sewer services, which created an overage on the sewer services. Okay? And that was approximately $19,000 for the furnish and install and the piping. The rock and ledge, we renegotiated that. How did we renegotiate that? Because it was over the 125% quantity, we had to, I went and looked at three other jobs, it happened at the same time. I looked at those... I looked at those, at their, at the cost of what those, of what the others paid out. We took the average of those costs, and that's what we paid them. So, we basically paid them what the going rate was on other jobs. We didn't give them what they said it cost to remove it. So, that was another sixteen thousand dollars. The drainage, actually, back to the rock and ledge. One other thing on the rock and ledge, we did borings. We did borings down Cedar Street. We did borings on all the streets. On Forest Street, we did a boring here. We did a boring over there. No ledge. But when we went to dig it up, we hit ledge. Cedar Street, we did borings. We hit ledge much sooner than we anticipated hitting ledge. So, we tried to do a preventative and tried to do it with borings. It just didn't happen to work this time. To go to the drainage portion of it, it says it's fifty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars over. However, thirty-five thousand dollars of that is from when we added the sidewalk, because we had to put the structures in, because before the sidewalk, the water would just roll off the road down into the, into the marshy area. Now, we have a sidewalk. We had to channel the water somewhere. So, we had to, that was part of the putting in the sidewalk in. So, we were twenty-two thousand dollars over. What we did before we started the project is we put a TV camera down every single drainage pipe, because we only wanted to replace and spend the money on the drainage pipe that we had to replace. However, when we started to dig up the drainage pipe, it was falling apart. It was rusted. As you know, the clay material was basically holding it in place. So, we had to replace more drainage pipe than we anticipated. On Elder Street, we missed three houses that needed drainage. We didn't know the drainage went out the back of the house. It's actually in a funky spot. It took us a few days to, to figure it out. But when we actually filled in the old sewer and it rained, we had three or four basements filling up with water that never filled up with water before. And we found out that their drainage, their roof drains and stuff, went to the old sewer. So, we ran drainage up Elder Street so they could tie in. That was eight thousand dollars. One other thing that we had to remove, which I was shocked that we found on Beach Street, we found a big tank, a big vault. Probably about a twelve-by-twelve vault where all these drainage pipes went in, a man, a couple sewer services went in, and then it went right to the sewer. We had to remove it. That was like three thousand dollars. It's just, it was one thing after another. The reason I have, oh, then there was calcium for dust control. Very dry summer. We exceeded that line. It was four thousand dollars. The reason I have uniform traffic officers and flaggers on here, when you actually take the difference between, we were only over by eight hundred dollars. But this was something that was not tracked by Stand Tech. This is one of the issues I had with them. When we were back in, at substantial completion, there was quite a bit of money not spent in traffic officers. I believe we were down around twelve thousand dollars spent out of a twenty-three thousand dollar budget. But they, after substantial completion, and in the spring, I was getting phone calls from different police forces saying, "How come you're not paying your bill?" And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" So, that number ballooned right there. We finally got a handle on, but it was definitely Stand Tech's job to track that number. But we did get all the services from the traffic control. The next item is binder course pavement. You see, it's thirty-nine thousand dollars over. Side streets, we're not supposed to get binder course pavement. But because of the ledge, because of the additional drainage that we had to remove and all that stuff, the roads could not get trench patched. They were just, nothing left to them. So, we didn't want to have to go back. So, they were ground down in a, they had a two-and-a-half-inch binder coat, and then the wearing course afterwards. On the other side of it, we had the wearing course pavement, another mistake that was done by Stand Tech. They grossly underestimated the amount of wearing course pavement that we needed. However, what we did, that number could have been a lot higher, because they had, they were charging us like ten dollars per square, per square to, for the pavement. We actually said we were going to pull this from the contract and have our own paver do it, because Ricky had a much better price. They honored that price, so we had them do it. So, we actually ended up getting the price that we went out to bid to get for someone to come in to pave another road. If you go down to, the next one is sidewalks, the curbing, curbing's way, way over. That is mostly from the sidewalk, and that was through the sidewalk. If you go to the next page, we have the road stabilization. The road stabilization was over by fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. We got down into some areas and we were trying to put the road back together, and the material was just not good. It's just a swampy area down there. There's clay materials. There's awful materials. So, to, in order to stabilize the road so that we didn't end up with this after a year or two, we put down some Geotech fabric, and we also put down some road stabilization materials, so we had good, sound roads. The whole premise of what we did here was so that we don't have to go back. We didn't want to have to dig up that road again, and we wanted to have good, sound roads so they last for many years to come, and we didn't have to do a lot of work to them. And then, the last item is, is water services. Again, we had to reroute water services, and we actually had to reroute a couple water mains, so there's a few additional water costs to that. That is where all, when you look at it, that is where all the money went. That's what happened. At the end of the day, we ended up with a good project. I, I haven't heard nothing but good things about it. We've actually put a water meter on the sewer side. We're seeing a lot more, less water coming from that area to the, to the wastewater treatment plant. We're also seeing, I believe, I'm not having any, I haven't heard any issues about drainage. So, it's, it's been a good project. Now, Stand Tech, what has Stand Tech done for us? Because that's a big question, because they made some mistakes. Stand Tech gave us seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for some pavement. We didn't totally pay them on their contract of three thousand dollars. They, we also had a major audit from the EPA on this project, where they looked at the entire project to make sure the money was spent where it was supposed to be spent and to make sure it was by American and everybody got paid. They did that entire audit with us. So, they, they were involved in that audit. Right now, they are still doing, filling out the necessary paperwork that we need to fill out. They are seeing the project right to the end, and we're not paying them any more money. How do we pay for this? I mean, that's a big, big item. I think that fifty percent, water fifty percent sewer is appropriate, because they ripped, we ripped up the roads to fix the sewer lines. We ripped up the roads to put in new water lines. The water side of it, I'd like to pay for it out of the, out of the water budget, this year's budget. The reason for that is, this is the first year we had a payment on the water meter project. The water meter project came in at seventy thousand dollars under budget. So, the loans came in under. The construction loan came in under. So, there's roughly thirteen thousand five hundred dollars there, and then another thousand I'd have to find in the budget, because half of it is roughly fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-one. The other portion would come from the sewer, and I recommend that the sewer, it comes out of the sewer CIP fund. I mean, it is a capital improvement project, so that's where I recommend it comes from. And I entertain any questions.
Council Bentley.
Not as much a question. I've reviewed it already. You think you did a great job going over it tonight, Sean, and explaining everything and throughout the project, the last, you know, the last year. I know you were coming up here dealing with a lot, you know, some headaches from some residents and trying to do everything, and, once again, keeping your eye on the dollar and doing everything you do to get the cost down. So, I give you credit for that. I think you did a great job running this project and keeping us informed in your final presentation here tonight, so.
Council Zink.
I've been trying to scramble for a calculator, but it looks to me like you're, and I'm still doing it in my head. So, it looks like your overrun is a percent and a half of the.
Yes, exactly.
I think you did a great job. I wish my projects came in a percent and a half.
I just.
I really do. I mean, did you build a contingency in?
That, that, that's over the contingency. That's the contingency, it was a ten percent contingency on the whole project, is what it was.
Even so.
Any other counselors? I have, I have a question, and just because we were talking about contracts earlier. So, forgive my ignorance around sewer projects, but why do we use time and material contracts as opposed to fixed-price contracts? Do they, is that just the way it's done in the sewer world?
Some of them are lump sum, you know, line items, and some are, are not, are time and material. It, it's, it's.
I just see, because when you do it, my point is that when you do a fixed-price contract, they bear the danger and responsibility of running over budget, as opposed to us as the customer bearing that.
And some of the line items in there are that way, but when you're digging, you don't know what you're running into. You just have no idea. So, I mean, it's hard to do a contract. You know, you try and do the best.
It's risky for them, I know.
Yeah. They had a very aggressive bid on this project, very aggressive. So, I mean, when you look at it, their bid, including the sidewalk, was a, was a little over a million and a half. The next closest one was closer to one point seven, and then the rest of them were two million and above. So, they were very aggressive on this bid.
Okay. Is this just a report, or do we need to take an action to close out?
I would suggest that we have an action to close out, and we will draft a resolution to remove the funds from the wastewater capital reserve.
So, we can just have a vote to close out and then have a draft resolution?
Councilor Branch.
Might I just?
Yeah.
Suggest bringing it back as a resolution and dealing with it at the business meeting, as opposed to another motion?
Okay.
Fine with that.
You can do that.
Everyone else fine with that? Okay. Sean, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Item five, ordinance licensure of a stand. That's really what it is, we're saying here. Do you want me to read this, or?
No. You can read the, the title, and we can go from there.
So, for those that are following at home with the packet that was posted online, attached to the revisions to the ordinance for our review, the ordinance being two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven dash oh-two, regulating licensure of a stand located on public property within downtown. Words that are underlined or memecy ordinance, items that are strike through are deleted. I had no questions when I read through it. Any other counselors have any concerns with, as this reads? Counselor, or Vice Chair Bentley?
Only question I had, and maybe we don't need it, it wasn't in number four, but section four and five, licensee fee and duration, now that it's year-round, do you need a date when the fee should be in? Do you need to say whether it's a hard day like January first, or do you need to say seven days before you start this has to be done? And maybe we don't need a date. That's the only thing I thought was, was maybe remiss.
I gotta find it now, but I recall there being a, there's not a date, but it's like within so many days of.
Okay. If it's somewhere else, I didn't see it, then.
I didn't highlight it in here, though. Tell me, sir, do you know where it is?
That's what I'm looking for.
And they can't stop without it anyway.
It doesn't specifically say.
Yes. Request for renewal shall be evaluated based on the previous year's compliance with the standards cited here and in other applicable local regulations. So, it's, their duration runs from when they apply for the application to when, one year thereafter.
Yep.
So, it's an annual.
That's fine. Yeah. I thought everything else was good with it.
Any other comments? Concerns? Are we looking for a vote?
No. A vote to just move it to a public hearing, and we'll set that up similar to the event, the cafe ordinance.
We don't need a vote on the public hearing.
No, yeah, just if the council's agreeable, we can move towards that at this point.
Any concerns with that? Counselor Branch.
Okay. Did I miss something? What was the public hearing for this evening?
That was for the cafe.
That was for, not this. This is for the carts. That was for the sidewalks outside of restaurants that are there now.
Okay. All right. Got it.
Counsel Levy.
I wasn't going to do it, but I just have to ask. Is the only change, major change to this, the year-round? Is it basically, wasn't it going to be the size of the cart, too, and?
Well, yes, correct. There's two things. There's the, there's the year-round opportunity, and there is the ability of somebody who wants to enlarge the space that they're going to use beyond what we have stated are the items you can, or the typical size of the area, and then make a petition to the council to have them waive certain portions of, of section seven, C through M, so they can have extra tables and sell extra things. That's what they wish to do.
So, it leaves the authority within the sitting council to determine whether or not a variance to this ordinance is allowed.
If you recall, that's.
I remember.
Want to do something, so.
The hot dogs. She didn't hold back. She said, "I'm going to do it because."
Oh, she was there?
"They're going to be buying."
She was great.
She didn't wait until.
She was in the original footprint.
She didn't wait until we decided.
Yep.
Any other issues with moving that public hearing? Then, Mr. Administrator, can we put that on the agenda?
Will do.
Item number six, town financial presentation by Matt Angel.
Good evening, Chairman and council members. I prepared a presentation, and I'd like to. Let's hope it goes on.
It's on. Could you, Sean, could you get the lights? Matt's got it.
Oh, that's really dark.
Yes. I'm scared.
First thing I want to say is, is in the last board package, I made a mistake. I gave you the February revenue report instead of the March revenue report. You have to understand that the system condition makes it difficult to even reconcile some of this stuff before it goes out the door, and I'm going to give you some examples, okay? The next four slides I have are going to be basically examples of what, what I'm up against trying to calculate what the unreserved fund balance is, okay? Unfortunately, every report has a different number. This is a balance sheet, and this kind of highlights the problem the best. If you look at the liability section, there's one account there that has a dollar in it. But if you look at the total liabilities, it says four point one million dollars. Obviously, the system isn't calculating the total correctly. What we've determined is, is there's a setup problem, and depending upon which report you're running, it depends upon what accounts are included in that total. Okay? This is the general funds balance sheet. Again, the total liabilities of four point seven million dollars doesn't agree with all the accounts that are above it. Also, if you can see right there, the fund balance, the total fund balance for the town is zero, and we all know that that's an incorrect number. Okay? This right here is what they call a year-to-date summary. You can see that at the bottom there, the fund balance is one point three million dollars. I can't run this as of a certain period. It's as of the date that I ran it, okay? This is the income statement. It's saying the fund balance is one point nine million dollars. Okay? Now, I don't want to come out and say that, I don't want to trash the system. Basically, what we've done is we called around to a lot of different communities in New Hampshire, and we found that New Market's the only one that's running like this, okay? We have examples here of Meredith that show that it's running correctly for them, okay? You can see for Meredith, their unreserved fund balance is three point nine million dollars, all right? That's from their balance sheet. And for their income statement, the, the ending number is three point nine million dollars. So, in the end of all of this, once all the setup issues, and, and believe me, the setup issues go back to, to two thousand and two, and it's only localized just to the general ledger. It doesn't impact any other modules, okay? Now, again, which reports are right? You know, it depends upon, pretty much every report's right based upon the setup it is. It's trying to report exactly what's in there, but you can't rely on the balance sheet or the income statement. However, you can rely on the payroll, the accounts payable, the receivables, and some revenue and expenditure reports. However, I can say that the trial balance is correct, and this is an example of the trial balance. This is what I use every day. And, and all it is, is just a listing of all the account numbers, and, and it doesn't distinguish between an asset, a liability, a fund balance account, revenue, or expenditure. However, I know that the trial balance is accurate, and if you were an accountant, you would understand what I'm about to say. Basically, every asset and liability account is reconciled to, to an outside document, okay? The fund balance is like the trailer on a, on a semi-tractor trailer. It just follows the truck, okay? Further, I know that the debits equal the credits, and I have been able to reconcile the income statement to the balance sheet because we have made some corrections to the setup, and unfortunately, they, they happened this afternoon. Because we, we really got an answer from the, the, the software vendor of what we could do Monday. So what we're doing about it, we've notified the software vendor. We're also reviewing and correcting any setup issues that we discover. Right now, it, again, all the reports reconcile to each other, but I still can't give you a report that shows the same number at the bottom because as we correct one thing, another thing is uncovering itself. Okay, let's go on to the town's finances. I have been able to reconcile the system enough to kind of, to get you in a, in a good ballpark area. Back in 2009, the town council had voted a, or recommended that the unreserved fund balance for the general fund to be 16% of operating expenditures, which equates to about two months of operations. To put it in the dollar terms, if we use the 2013 budget, it's gonna come out to about 985,115 dollars. So that's where the fund balance should be at year end. Anything above that should be returned back to the taxpayers as a reduction of their tax rate.
Nine what, Matt? Could you repeat that, please?
Uh, it's 985.
Can't see it.
Okay.
My eyes.
985,000.
Thank you.
115 dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. If you're looking at my numbers on the screen, the general fund is 6.1 million dollars. I know that the, the town meeting voted a higher number. That higher number included water, sewer, recreation, so that 6.1 million is only the general fund. Now, the unreserved fund balance as of the end of March is 1.1 million dollars, okay? A conservative estimate of revenue through the end of the year, and right now what I'm trying to do is show you how, what my number is to the end of the year, okay? We're expecting to receive about 331,000 dollars of revenue. However, if we conserve, I'm conservatively overestimating my expenditures at just over a million dollars. A large amount of that represents payroll, okay? This would equal an unreserved fund balance of 393,000 dollars, okay? Now, when I spoke at the Budget Committee on April 9th, I said that the unreserved fund balance was 553,000. That number was based upon an erroneous report, okay? So it's really now, right now, 393,000. Let me kind of give you a cause and effect of the, the resolution for Main Street enhancement, okay? Basically, because that was a no vote, the general fund became the main funding source for this reconstruction project, okay? What happens is, is as time progresses, doors close to opportunities, okay? As of June 30th, I have to record a reservation of fund balance in the general fund, so basically, we don't run into a cash flow problem, and also, it's according to generally accepted accounting principles of the 535,000. So the unreserved fund balance would be pushed into a deficit of 142,000 dollars. Now, you have to understand, too, the numbers that I'm showing you here are how the DRA wants the town to report their fund balance on, on a report that gets sent to them called the MS-5. How the auditors would represent that number, it would be even a larger deficit because they, they convert your revenue, some of your revenue to the cash basis. However, 142,000 is the number that you would be looking at, at tax rate setting time. Now, also, the, the next door that closes, if there's no resolution on the downtown TIF, is that as of August 30th, the captured value can't be used to reduce the tax rate. Okay, the best case scenario would be to approve the resolution as the 2008 town council recommended. Basically, it would, it would bump up the unreserved fund balance to 928,000 dollars, okay? Which is still below the, the recommended balance, but you're within the ballpark, okay? Depending upon how operations are for 2013, you might have a surplus in your unreserved fund balance to reduce the tax rate in 2014. Alternatively, if, if you, so to speak, if you were to cut the baby in half, closing the downtown TIF could be used to reduce the tax rate. However, the unreserved fund balance would still bear the brunt. You know, you're not transferring in the downtown TIF surplus. So it could take six to seven years for the unreserved fund balance to dig itself out of a hole, assuming about a thou, $100,000 goes into it every year. That's assuming that operations can, can beat the budget. Also, little or no water surplus would be used if you split the baby. Okay? As an end note, I just wanna make sure that you understand that any of these numbers will all change based upon any new revenue or expenditure information that I receive. Also, the numbers could change based upon system setup issues that we identify.
Can you get the lights, please? Counselor Bentley.
Matt, thanks for your presentation, your time, and your work on this. You know, unequivocally, Matt, you've spoken to people, you know, you've read the books, you, that if we do the proposal to, to switch the, minus the, the money for the sky bridge, correct? Switch it over, except for the funds for the sky bridge, that it's legal, it's proper, it's okay to do.
To close out the general fund?
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay.
And, and you also, I believe, stated, the last time you brought this up to us, if we do nothing, none of the above, this has to be, this amount has to be, come from somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
We're either gonna raise taxes, or we're gonna find $500,000 worth of cuts in a town that we just cut 560,000 from last year.
If you find the $500,000 of cuts, you still have to raise it through the tax rate. So cut out services to pay for that bill.
You need to make a million dollar of cuts to make a zero gain.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Yeah. Counsel Ray.
Matt, I got a quick question. In the downtown TIF, how much money is there right now?
It's about 480,000. That doesn't include the 55,000 for the sky bridge.
And the Black Bear TIF, how much is there?
I'm not prepared to talk about the Black Bear tonight.
Estimate?
No, I didn't even look at it today, so I can't give you a gut number.
You know where we can get that number?
I can get that number very quickly.
Yeah, right.
But I, I'd also, that's one of those funds I did not look at for the setup issue. Because I literally, literally only had a couple of hours to pull together some of the numbers for tonight.
Counsel Levy.
Just a couple of questions. So, in previous years, that 535,000 dollars, was that reported to DRA? And did that put us in the deficit that you're saying would put us in this year?
The 535,000 was reported as part of the, it's included in the water fund. So it would be as part of a fund balance number on that balance sheet and income statement report called the MS-5 to the DRA.
So it did not lower the deficit, it didn't show us in a deficit in the past seven years? Or did it?
Well, not in the general fund.
Asking for a yes or no answer.
Not in the general fund, okay?
Now, it would.
What it, what it would do is, is if you recall, there was a $4 million deficit in the Main Street reconstruction project, okay? So most of it's in there. Because remember, the revenue came in one fund and it was spent out in another fund.
I'm, I'm just asking a simple question.
Understand.
Last year, did the 535,000 dollars show up as a deficit and, and go against our surplus at the end of the year like you're saying it would this year?
I don't know how it would show up as a surplus.
Well, no, no. Did it, did it go against our surplus, or whatever money we had in there? Maybe we didn't have a surplus, that's why the tax rate. But if we had $100,000 at the end of the year, like you're saying, if we had 395, or whatever it is on the, tonight you said we had, I think roughly 395 in a surplus, that's your estimate?
But that's only in the general fund. The 535 right now sits in the water fund.
Okay, and if we don't close it out, just to answer my question. You're saying it would go against whatever we have for a surplus? And it would show a negative, and that we'd have to raise taxes to get to?
Basically, right now, there is no funding source for the 535,000 that was spent on the Main Street reconstruction, okay? Since there is no funding source, the general fund becomes the default funding source.
And I'm asking, did that happen last year?
No, because before your no vote, the funding source was the water fund. However, regardless of whether they had the authority to do it or not. Yeah.
It's not, it's not a good answer.
You have to understand that the money sits in two different funds. You can't take money from the water fund and make it the benefit of the general fund.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? So, so I'll talk. I see two things.
Yeah.
I see, we need to fix the system as fast as humanly possible because we're, we're operating off of instruments that are not telling us what, that aren't aligned. So we have no idea what the truth looks like. We have some idea, because you're able to sort of back into it through, through all the other elements of the ledger. So, but, so you're backing into what the actual number looks like. We need to get our instruments fixed.
Yes.
So to make any sort of decision so our instruments are fixed is still kind of flying blind. So my, I guess my question is, how quickly can they come reinstall or fix whatever bugs are in our installation to get our books to match up, like the Meredith example?
Because I've reconciled it, I kind of like have an itemized list of what I have to do. I can't really gauge how much time it's gonna take to fix it. Because it, it took me, I don't know, a half an hour to do the general fund and then tie it out and still know that I have other problems. When you make a fix, it could uncover other problems that I'm just not aware of. And then also, it might take longer than usual to fix other things. So I'm hoping it's gonna take me a week or two.
You're talking weeks, not months?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that before we make, I realize, we have a deadline. When June 30th comes, if we've done nothing, then 535, even if it's just on paper, is just subtracted from our general fund balance to make us look like we're in a deficit of 142,000 dollars.
Yes.
So it's gonna increase the tax rate, because that's what DRA is.
It may.
It may. But DRA is gonna see us in a deficit. So it, that will, that will, it's to some level negatively affect the tax rate. So, can we get the, it's a priority of mine to get the right numbers so that we can have this, the conversation that we're trying to have now about.
Well, as we get closer to year end, we'll have better numbers because the estimates become smaller and smaller and smaller.
Oh, we don't have forever.
I know.
Counsel Zink.
Mr. Chair, maybe you can help clarify, or other counselors can help clarify my question. As I think about this transfer, and we went through this last time in terms of what our options were, and I think there were four, and we went through what each of those were. And your recommendation to follow through on the intent of the town, original town council votes and take it out of the water fund was turned down. So therefore, it's gonna come out of either the TIF or the tax, it's gonna come out of the taxpayers' funds, whether it's in the TIF.
One, one way or another.
Right. So we, so is the question, Mr. Chair, whether we agreed with the town council's original decision to take it out of the water? Is that what we're debating?
To me, what we're, I mean, I suppose that was the debate that we had last time, whether or not, and I think the council voted not to agree with it. The, or at least because it required unanimous consent in order to, to comply with the 2008 council. So, to me, the only argument or discussion to have right now, because it shouldn't be an argument, it should be a discussion, is how do we pay for this to ensure, like as stewards of the taxpayers' money, that we don't end up in a deficit when it comes time for the MS-5 to go? Right?
Be nice.
Yeah, follow up, yeah.
So, basically, what this council is doing is saying that, I, I know the mechanism wasn't appropriate. I get, I totally get that, and Matt told us how to, how to, how to re mechanize it. But I, I, I wanna, I, I just wanna be clear that the reason that there is not a unanimous vote is because this council disagrees with the decisions that the previous council made at the time the decision was made.
This council does not unanimously agree with the 2008 council.
That's all I, that's all I want.
Counsel Bentley.
The previous three councils voted unanimously to do it, and it still didn't happen. So the other three were unanimous votes, so this, this has been voted on 25 to three, and, and unless someone's got some ideas how we're gonna cut a million dollars so we don't raise taxes, or raise taxes half a million and kind of, we have to do something, correct, Matt? We have to.
You have to do something.
Make this right. So, I agree, it's gonna take a couple of weeks to do that, but like the chair said, the clock is ticking, and all of a sudden, June will be here, then October will be here. And, I mean, we, we need to put this to rest, and I think we have a, you know, Matt stood at the easel. People wanna call it a shell game and call it funny money. I mean, if we don't have trust in Matt, Matt shouldn't be standing in front of me right now, I believe, in front of us tonight. He's done his due diligence. He showed on the easel, we're going from here to here, to here for this, and it's gonna close that out and, and make this better, and I, I don't know how more can be driven home.
As much as I wanna relive the April 4th meeting, it was so, so much fun, let's try to continually focus on solutions, not talking about votes that didn't go the way we wanted them. And I voted with you. Counsel Ray.
Now, speaking of solutions, you know, we're up here to make decisions, but we don't have really the, the final facts.
Thank you.
It's, it's very, very difficult. I mean, you're asking all of us to make a very, very important decision with only, with not all the numbers. It's, 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 it's very difficult. I mean, it's, and without those numbers, you're only gonna do some options that we could possibly have.
What numbers are you missing?
I mean, what, what are our final numbers gonna be?
Oh, for the year end?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I, I gave you a, a best guess at this moment for the general fund.
Yeah. It could change, right?
It definitely could change.
I mean, I thought last time we had, well.
If motor vehicle comes in better than projected, then the, the fund balance will be higher. If it comes in lower than projected, it will be lower. If the departments can, you know, dig deeper, it will go lower. So there's a lot of factors going on.
Is that it, Counsel Ray? A follow up or no?
No.
Counsel Levy.
Just for whatever it's worth, the reason the other three councils, when they voted for it, they couldn't do it. That's why they couldn't, they didn't, they didn't have the ability to transfer it directly. That's why it didn't happen.
That's why we're here, is because they didn't have.
Well, I understand. So when you say it's 25 to three, with all due respect, that the last, they didn't, the mechanism wasn't correct, the way they went about it. So, for whatever it's worth.
You know, if it, if it did have that language in it, we wouldn't be here.
Can I, can I propose something? We will never have perfect facts because we can't wait for the books to close, because then it'll be too late to make the decision because June 30th is the cutoff. So we have to make a decision prior to June 30th. But I think that in the interest of doing this on as best set of estimates as we can, Matt, I- Matt, I have ultimate faith in the estimates you're giving us right now, but if we can get the system online in two weeks and have numbers coming out of the system that is, where the balance sheet actually balances, then I think that we, as a council and stewards of the town's money, can then have a conversation based on those numbers and then, and make a decision based on that.
Okay. Now, if you do decide to split the baby, there is some kind of wrangling amongst yourself to come up with the numbers of what you guys think it should be. So that's not something I can, I can make recommendations, but it's ultimately your decision.
It's on our back.
Okay.
Councillor Levy.
Since you're looking for some options, I'll give you an option. Because I've given this a lot of thought. We could transfer the $470,000 from the downtown TIF, correct?
To which fund?
To the general fund.
Yes.
And we could transfer the money that's in the Black Bear TIF into the general fund, theoretically. And if we did that, we would have somewhere in the proximity of $870,000 transferred to the general fund. You could then take that money and pay off the $535,425 that is outstanding for the water balance fund number 20.
From the general fund?
Yeah.
That would take a town meeting action?
True.
And plus, as I understand it, for the Black Bear TIF, there are other balls up in the air, too, so.
Well, actually.
I don't know, I can't make a good gauge on whether you can close that or not.
Well, I did a little research, can I, do you want me to just spell it out? It's up to you.
I'll allow it right now, but let's not go too deep into the Black Bear, since that's on the agenda right now.
Okay, well, I read the statute, 162, okay. And it says, "The portion of captured assessed value, which is not used either for the purpose of retirement of bonds and notes, or for the purpose of the operation and development of the Tax Increment Financing District, shall be deemed excess captured assessed value." And excess captured assessed value shall be returned to the tax list. Now, there has never been a bond taken out. There is no, nothing happening. As far as, you know, this having happened in the past, in 2011, if you take a look at our annual report, you'll see on page 127 that they actually reclassified $339,309 that was in the Black Bear TIF to the general fund. FYI.
How's that?
I don't know. They did it. They did a lot of things. I'm just letting you know, they reclassified it. It's in our town report, you can look it up, it's on page 127, 2011 annual report. And if you read.
Can I see that?
Well, it's just a note I made, I mean, you'd have to go online.
Do you have a report with you?
No, you'd have to go online, you can do it online.
Do you have a report? Do you have a 2011? Oh, okay.
It was, it was under subchapter, I think, section, I think it was section 43, or, it was different online, but either section 43 or section 21.
Oh.
Just so you know.
No, that's not a reclassification.
Well, they called it a reclassification.
Yeah. That's a new accounting pronouncement that requires the combining of accounts, okay? And it doesn't have the effect of what you're thinking that it is. And it.
Well, they transferred it.
They did it for accounting pronouncement purposes, but the money was never transferred in the general ledger, okay? Basically, a new accounting pronouncement was annually, the governmental accounting standards board come out with new accounting pronouncements. And the town has to change its financial statements to keep up to speed with that, okay? What that is, is to adjust your financial statements to the new pronouncement, okay? The auditors did that, okay? They don't have the authority to transfer the funds. I can assure you, the money wasn't moved. It's still sitting in the fund, they just have to report it together with other funds.
Okay. So that said, the money that is captured there, and that'll be the last thing I say on it, by statute, it's not a may, it's not a can, it is a shell. Any money that is not, and it's by the way, right in the document that you sent me regarding our plan, it states.
What page?
It's on the second page of the email you sent. It's under Tax Increment Financing for New Market. Under Black Bear, it says, "The current taxes in the district continue to support the general fund. If the amount of taxes collected exceeds the bond payment, the excess goes to the general fund." Now, obviously, there's no bond payment. So by law, and I vetted this with two attorneys, FYI, and the former commissioner, so I tried to do my homework before I brought it up. They all said that it is absolutely by RSA law. You can read it. It says.
The RSA also says operations, too.
There's no operations, there's nothing going on?
Yeah, and right now, I'm waiting for word from the DRA, which is the authority here. We've been in contact with them and we're waiting for a letter back.
What did you send them, Matt?
So, I just have to say, it's up in the air right now, so we're just.
Yeah, can I, I do have a right to ask them, though. What did you send them, DRA?
I don't know the exact date.
No, what did you send them?
Oh, we sent them a letter.
Yeah, did you send them any information?
Yes, they understand everything that's going on here.
So you sent them the plan?
I wasn't actually the person who sent it, so whether the plan was sent or not, I'm unsure.
Well, I think they need that information in order to give you a letter back.
Well, I.
I don't think you're going to get a letter back without that information, so it's kind of a catch 22. I wouldn't bring it up.
All right, Councillor Levy, I think, as much as you want to talk about Black Bear, it's not on the agenda right now, we can have a conversation, as I'm against closing Black Bear, but.
It's not closing.
I understand, you're talking about the excess captured value. I know, you're talking about the captured value. We can have that as a course of action when we talk about the potential solutions to our finance problem, once we get the system running and giving us hard numbers that we're operating, so we can make decisions based on real numbers. Otherwise, we could be here all night arguing about this.
Okay.
And a hush falls across the room.
Don't want to vote on anything?
There's nothing to vote on right now. There's no motions on the floor.
Okay, I thought you were going to make a motion today.
I, for one, would want the system to be operating correctly prior to making motions on choices on anything.
Okay.
Councillor Zink.
I guess the question is, Matt, is there anything the council can do to assist you in moving ahead on this?
On the accounting system?
Yeah, I mean, if you had additional resource, is there some way we could?
No.
Assistance to you?
No. It's just, you know, time alone spent with the accounting staff, just reconciling it out, you know, chasing down other issues that are time consuming.
I hope you'll let us know if there is.
Yeah, will do.
Matt, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, ZBA appointment. We'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to nominate Jerry O'Connell for ZBA. Term expires March 2015.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, town administrator of the vote.
Councillor Wright. All right. Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Councillor Lebranche?
Aye.
Councillor Zink?
Aye.
Councillor Carmichael?
Aye.
Councillor Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Azar?
Aye, motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine, standing committee minutes, planning board, councillor Carmichael.
Yes, in the last planning board meeting last week, we just did some discussing on, a gentleman, Mr. Deco was in here, and it basically was on conceptual sites down with MAP here, Lincoln Street, Washington Street area, but it was just something in a bell, let them know that it was just conceptual.
Conceptual for?
Site plan, before we can go before, you know, before they, just come in and showing some ideas that they had, I guess is the best way to put it.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I don't know.
Black Bear TIF and Highway Public Safety, there was no Highway Public Safety meeting, and I was at a town administrator's search committee meeting during Black Bear TIF. Were you, okay, so, the minutes are in there. Conservation Commission, councillor Wright.
We talked about Wiggins Farm, there's some encroachment there, and they're going to be approaching the people to basically, you know, nice way and tell them, you know, where the boundary lines are. Also talked about the putting the ware net back in, and he's going to, he asked for two days to do that, and the timeframe was from May, or April to May 15th, because you're not sure exactly when the tide's. They also talked about the, they're going to be funding the fishing derby again, and also, they voted to fund the oyster restoration, they're having trouble finding additional funds, so 5,000 was appropriated to go towards that. And we just had some other educational opportunities, I understand that they're going to be funding some field trips for the New Market School students, and also, there's a scholarship for senior, and it doesn't have to be a New Market senior, but goes to New Market School System, but a senior in the district here, and as long as you have the interest for, you know, conservation. So it's, the first meeting was very good.
Great, thank you. CIP, councillor Lebranche.
There's been no CIP meetings, but I did have a discussion with Diane Hardy, a little over a week ago, I think it was, in reference to potentially getting this started up, because the, Mr. Fillion was the chairman of the CIP, he's no longer on the CIP, so it goes through the planning office, they're the ones that initiate basically the whole process. So I asked her if she could possibly get in touch with planning board and budget committee to find out who the reps were and to maybe get this committee up and running early May, just to at least get, you know, a plan in place. So hopefully, in May, I'll have some report.
Thank you. Budget Committee, councillor Levy.
We had an organizational meeting, and we voted for Brian Hart to be the chair, and the nice lady to my right, I forget her name.
Helen Snyder.
Helen Snyder's the vice chair. And we had a lively discussion about the finance of the town, and basically, we were hoping to get a number, I think the number we got at that night was a little bit different to what Matt gave us tonight, it went up about, I think, 60,000 or so from that discussion, but as you can see, the finances seem to be a moving target. So that was pretty much what we discussed.
Great, thank you. Advisory Heritage Commission, councillor Zink.
No meeting.
And Energy Committee, councillor Bentley.
No meeting, but we also need to add to the open positions, an energy, if we can get that online, please, Mr. Administrator. We're down to three members, and we need to get some bodies, I believe two, I'll let you know tomorrow for sure.
Councillor Lebranche.
I just, I felt I should bring up the efficiencies committee, it's not on here, but we did have a meeting last evening, and in the past, from the council, it was the chair and the vice chair that sat on that committee, that was the way it was originally set up. I've been attending it, because nobody's told me to not go, so, if you want to tell me to not go, that's okay, I'll work on that. But I would like the council to consider at least having two people on that committee. There's a lot of potential, some of the subcommittees within the organization are starting to move forward, and I would certainly appreciate the council to put two people out there for at least the next 12 months.
I would entertain motions for nominations from the council. Or we can do this next meeting.
There's not another meeting until May, anyway, so you've got time to do it.
Can we add it to the agenda, can we add it to the committee reports as well?
Sure. Yeah, I just.
There you go, thank you. Old new business. Oh, yeah, all the lights come on. Councillor Bentley.
I stated previously that the Gilbert family had contacted me about a memorial they want to have for their father, Cal Gilbert, a selectman here, a police officer here for many years. And I appreciate the people that sent me emails, including our administrator, Val Shelton, Ree Cooper, I get a lot of emails on some different ideas, I'm not going to read them all, but I'd like direction on, again, what we want to do. Do we want to, or should I read them all? I need to get back to the family, I guess, I don't want to.
It'd probably be the most appropriate.
Okay, so, so one idea was the overlook at the mill, there's a river walk that Chinburg has developed behind the mill portion, which is for the public. The Arbor Park, which, shamelessly, I don't know where that is or what that is. Where's the Arbor Park, if anyone knows?
It's at the bus stop.
Bus stop.
Oh, okay.
It's right where the Arbor is.
If I may. I don't go downtown much, I go down that.
If I may, in reference to the Arbor Park, that might not be a bad location, because what used to be there was the police department.
Well, let's let him go first.
Yeah, steps on that, and that's another, but they didn't call it that, that's why. Forward this road of Cal Gilbert, my suggestion would be to consider the downtown bus stop park after him, not Arbor Park, the downtown bus stop. Cal served our community as a policeman, involved the resident for many years, and would be deserving an appropriate recognition for him. Anyway, so that, and we have the Pocket Park, a couple different, two or three, three different people sent to the Pocket Park next to Riverworks, and soon to be another establishment there. So, number one, we own all those properties, we know that, the town does, owns the Arbor Park, owns the Pocket Park, and the Chinburg one, I guess, that's Chinburg. Okay, so I will, if, with everyone's okay, I will contact Mr. Chinburg and ask him if it's even an option. My thought was to go to the family and say, we've come up with four options, and let them go look and see them and say, we think this, and then come back and say, is it okay? But unless anyone has some ideas or thoughts or questions or.
The overlook at the mills, is that town property?
No, we just said it's not.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you were talking about.
No, I said I would contact Chinburg, if everyone, Mr. Chinburg, if everyone allows me to.
But behind the buildings is not town property either, by the river walk where he's created that. So it's those two locations.
Okay.
You'd have to have a discussion with Mr. Chinburg.
Yes, okay. So that's what I'll do, then, I'll work with Ed and get a contact and speak with him, and then present the family and say, hey, again, there's no cost, the family's paying for it, and Cal certainly did, you know, a ton for our town for many, many years, I think it'd be appropriate to work with him, so that's all.
I wouldn't even suggest, no, okay, go ahead. Any issues with councillor Bentley doing that? Any other old new business? Councillor Lebranche.
Just one thing, and I noticed it because I printed out the actual agenda, but when we do the agenda on here, the town administrator's report's never part of the agenda, so we kind of skip right over it. So we.
It's not on our.
It's not, when you do the bookmark.
I don't have a bookmark, oh.
So if you're using, if you're using a laptop, you're going to skip right over it.
Which I did.
So if we could, number one, make sure that that gets included on the bookmarks, and number two, maybe we could get his report before we leave.
Yes. Any other old new business before we move to the town administrator report? Yes, councillor Bentley.
Well, I was going to make the motion to seal minutes from earlier meeting, but we can do it at the end.
Yeah, okay. One piece of old business that I have is the priorities we worked on last week. Everyone should have had it in their box, I would, I'm going to put an agenda item on for us to come up with strategies, actual strategies we can enact as a council in order to achieve those priorities this year, so if people could put some mental capacity to that between now and our meeting in two weeks, I would greatly appreciate that. And also, for members of the public, the priorities are actually on the website, so if, or they will be tomorrow on the website, they will be tomorrow on the website. So, please, feel free to contact administrator, myself, any councillor you're comfortable contacting, if you have ideas as to how we should go about enacting strategies to achieve those priorities, because public input is always. priorities, because public input is always warranted and wanted, so... Any other old, new business? If not, I will entertain motions on several sets of non-public minutes. Yes, Counsel Bentley.
Will I make a motion to seal the non-public minutes we had earlier this evening on dealing with personnel issue?
A second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? Town administrator, the vote.
Counsel Wright.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche.
Aye.
Counsel Zink.
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael.
Aye.
Counsel Bentley.
Aye.
Chairman Nizarra.
Aye. Motion passed at seven to zero. I'll entertain motions on several non-public minutes. Yes, Vice Chair Bentley.
Make motion to approve the March 19, 2012, non-public organization... Oh, that's not... That's organizational meeting minutes.
Yes.
11A.
Is the motion on the floor?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, there is one... What is it again?
The organizational meeting.
It's... A is under the word not... Approval of non-public, but it obviously wasn't non-public, it was our organizational meeting.
Everyone should have gotten those in their box, the envelope that was in our box. Counsel Levy.
There is one small change, so I think when we go into non-public...
Non-public, we can talk about it. Okay, so we will postpone approving those minutes, since there's a change.
Organizational one?
Well, he has a change to it.
Well, it was the non-public part before we had the organizational.
Remember we had the non-public prior to the organizational meeting?
At least that's the one I see here.
Yes, that should be the ones we're voting on. It's not the organizational meeting minutes, it's the non-public portion prior to the organizational meeting. So would you...
Let's draw the motion.
Let's draw the motion?
Yep.
All right.
That's it.
I will entertain a motion on the other side of many minutes in there. Yes, Counsel Lebranche.
Just to save the motion, there's a change I'd like to see made in...
In the non-public minutes?
In the April 4th, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, there's a change you want to see made?
Yes.
Okay, so we will discuss both of those in non-public. Thank you. So that is it. Our next meeting date, we have May 2nd here, which is our next regular meeting date, but we are meeting on the 25th, correct?
Yes.
Next Wednesday? And what time is that meeting?
I believe it's 6:30 is the first one.
6:30 is the first meeting, so... Counsel Levy.
Just one thing.
Yes.
I think there's a gentleman that's been waiting in the audience to speak, and you might want to just explain that public comment, is it the... Just for the sake of...
Yeah. Is there someone in the audience that wants to speak?
Well, he did. Good, he's been here for two hours.
Yeah, so...
The business is new business.
Okay, well, just so you know, and I'll allow you to speak, but usually during workshops, there's no public comment. Public comment actually occurs during the business meeting, but we'll allow it since you've waited patiently here.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You guys are looking for money, several places in money in the town.
Oh, yeah, name and address.
Oh, my name is Bert Allen, 56th Smith Garrison Road. There are certain places, and if you guys work together, on places that could be made money, certain companies that might want to move over to here. One is your transfer station. There is two companies in progress of looking for location that would be willing to pay up to about $70,000 to rent that transfer station from you, that moves lugs containers, which would also cut out the... They would open it up to the town for five days, free of, you know, free of service for the people that dump their trash. It would be a pay service. That would get you out of reimbursement of $20,000 trucks, you know, to lug containers around, because they're a Canadian lugging company. It's another one that wants to move up from mass closer to waste management. That would be an asset to the town. One of the things that are being missed here is we built a huge infrastructure in downtown, and the state had proposed, and it got lost about eight years ago, it brought up once about the traffic flow of New Market, and the gross capacity of trucks, over 80,000 pounds coming up 108, coming in. They had suggested to you prior back along ways that you should travel your traffic coming north on 108, reroute coming south, go up Beach, excuse me, Elm Beach, come out past right by here, the side of here, and down over Railroad Ave, so you don't beat your infrastructure up. That was before you guys had invested all this money in the downtown district. That would have allowed you to put in five times as many parking spaces facing the businesses, which would make them flourish downtown, and the thing was to pick up meters. That amount of spaces, if you walked down, you count them from one end of town to another, is the same amount as Portsmouth picks up in their downtown district. New Market has a beautiful water district down there, only water district like it anywhere this part of Boston. I mean, there are companies... There's a company that would like to move up here if you rerouted your traffic, that would like to come up with ducts, and it would be a perfect fit to this town. You know, you nice duct toy, you go in at Allen's Point, come back up and come right up the landing by the church there, right there for the patrons, half-day tours. I mean, there's... There are people that want to move here, but things are proposed by the state and not listened down to the council, and they're a very large amount of monies, because if that infrastructure breaks down, okay, this infrastructure, trucks running over roads that just can't take it in this town, you have to do studies, like on Ash Swamp Road, how live the ground is. Post the roads, let the sewer department decide where their bad infrastructure is, post your roads, and move your traffic so you're only going one way. You've also got Pentecost, that new road that comes this way, it's blind coming up the hill. If you were traveling traffic coming from the south, let's say it's coming from the south going north, you would take out a possible accident there. Rerouting traffic, you have more parking, those are pay meters, you're picking up roughly $600,000 a year in cash flow, monthly cash flow. They're trying to do... I see them trying to do accounting problems, and you need a steady cash flow, and you're losing your cash flow problems. Well, start making some cash flow things. If the hot dog woman would like for, you know, you have her set up there, she gets four parking spaces in front if you read to that road, well, every time a person jumps out, they're spending a nickel or dime to pick up that meal quickly for lunch. You can't go down during lunchtime, there's no parking spaces, so business won't flourish. The more businesses, the smaller business you can have, the more businesses you can have in there, as long as you have those no spaces like they have in Portsmouth. But you've got to have your one-way traffic. We have a very unique town. I mean, there's ways all around that there's people, if the council will listen, the ways of picking up money. I mean, I haven't quite figured out all in the solid waste budget, because there's no numbers to work with, why we pay $2.25 for a bag, yet Barrington pays $1.10. We're paying twice as much for a bag of garbage. Okay, go back, what's it costing us in money in the solid waste? How much money's coming in? How much is being drawn? How much are you paying off of containers? If a container company can come in here and haul for us, give the town $70,000 extra dollars a year for rent, open it up for five days and it ain't costing us an employee, jump on it. I mean, we need the cash. Town needs the cash, so look around. There's a lot of people around willing to speak up to you if you listen to them.
Great. Well, we appreciate you coming in and speaking to us, and really absolutely appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time, sir. Counsel Bentley?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That's what we need is community involvement, people, there's no idea that's a bad idea, and every idea should be listened to. So as far as the council listens, I don't think there's anyone up here that won't listen. And if... I think, Mr. Allen, you should go a step farther and send that info to either our administrator, if you know if company's looking to do something with the transfer station, you know, and you know names, or, you know, even take it to the next level, and then, you know, I don't mean tonight certainly, but I mean, so we can, you know, if there is an option or something out there, we can look into it further.
Yeah, it's just that certain companies are afraid to move to this town because they see it an unstable argument. It makes you leery of being able to go and do business here. You take that perception off and work with them publicly, as they realize it come up and mention different things to you, people open up. It's kind of like all that vacant land that we've got over there at where the old Bowdette Farm is, where we used to go roost hunt. As you go down the industrial park, the town actually owns a runway right there, crosses a track right there, it's kind of grown up, but that's your runway into the park there, the gas, the natural gas stops right up at the junction. That's owned by Pan Am. That would... Pan Am put that in there, that track, with the town back 25 years ago, hoping the town was going to go and do construction because it goes directly down to the dock. There isn't a single industrial, if they knew, there was a business pushing like Rochester did to get that other business in here, that you've got natural gas right there, you've got an entrance that you don't have to build a bridge, you go right into the industrial park, it's 110 feet across from the edge where the sign is, where the last building is there, and you cross into that whole section. The town has, by eminent domain laws now, has the right to take a 100-foot strip on the other side of that railroad track, just like they did up in Wells, Maine, and built that thing. The town could even have a railroad stop there. Many other things, if you know where the entrance is, but nobody knows where the entrance is, where is the town road entrance to it? It's right there, you don't need a bridge.
Sure.
The town owns it.
Great. Well, thank you again, sir. Really appreciate it. Town administrator report, is there anything that you wanted to...
I just wanted to mention that the trees that we were going to be cutting over at the Public Works Garage will be cut next week.
Excellent.
And Jim Hilton provided an email, I don't think I had provided to you, but he is continuing to book the community center for a couple birthday parties and receptions, and he also has a... Has already received a payment for a church group that is going to be using the softball fields off the times that the other leagues do for the next several weeks, and bringing in some private revenue right now.
Great.
Working forward on that.
Thank you. So as we said before, next meeting, the business meeting is May 2nd. We will be meeting at 6:30 next Wednesday, the 25th, for discussions with those agencies or organizations. I will entertain a motion, enter non-public, under which... The hiring one.
Make a motion to go to RSA 91-A colon 3-2, hiring a person as public employee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any... Everyone in favor? Who's rising aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Here, none in non-public. Thank you very much.